All right, everybody already up here on the bench, okay? Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City of Hartsfield, South Carolina, public hearing at regular city council meeting for Tuesday, February thirteenth. Also Galentine's Day. So thank you for choosing to spend Galentine's Day here with us, the City Council of Hartsfield. Moving right along, Ms. Mack, if you would lead us in the invocation, we'll follow by that with the Pledge of Allegiance and the Civility Pledge. I would invite all of you to stand and pray in your faith as we pray in ours.
Let us bow. Most holy and everlasting Father, thou art God, and God alone. Father, we thank you for a beautiful day that we have assembled in this hallowed hall to do the business of the City of Hartsfield that we all love so much. Father, we ask you, as we go forward in this meeting, that you would send your holy presence into this meeting. We don't have all the same ideas, but help us, Lord, to be more willing to accept ideas and look at things in a different light. Don't use the same prism and the same pair of glasses for the same place that you sit. So we have fresh eyes on this council, and we expect to do a great job. We thank you for bringing us to this day, Lord, and we thank you that you've covered us under your precious blood. So we ask that you now, Lord, cover all of our residents, all of our first responders, our staff, our council, and every resident, every area in the city. We ask these in the name of our Son, Jesus Christ, we do pray. Amen.
Amen. And the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the God which is saints, one nation, under the God of freedom, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, now for the Civility Pledge. I pledge to build a strong and prosperous community by maintaining for sibling engagement, respecting the customs of their people, combining schools for the betterment of my city. Thank you, Ms. Mack. Thank you, everyone else. And that will move us right into, that says Executive Session, I think it means General Session, right? Am I missing something? Yeah.
It's a misprint.
Regular. Yeah, just a misprint, okay. Approval of the Minutes. I would entertain a motion to waive the reading of and approve the minutes of the January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
That's so moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Of the minutes, any corrections? All right, well, all those in favor of waiving the reading and approving the minutes of the January sixteenth meeting, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pete, you aye?
Yes, I'm aye.
All right. The ayes have it, minutes are approved. That'll bring us to Proclamations, and we have two proclamations this afternoon. Ms. Caraway, if you would join us up front.
Well, this first proclamation is to recognize Black History Month. In short and sweet, we recommend the Council of Hartsfield, the Black History Month, special time set aside to recognize the achievements and contributions of African-Americans to the world. Except for our city, family, state, and nation. Whereas we take pride in our country's strength and diversity in every area, the arts, sciences, the business, and politics. Whereas history is made each and every day, so the celebration of Black History should not be limited to one particular day. Now therefore, I, K.C. Hancock, Mayor of the City of Hartsfield, and State of South Carolina, do hereby proclaim this month, February twenty-four, as Black History Month. And urge all citizens to come together to celebrate Black History and see your performance. It's my honor to present this to you. Now, this one is for Random Acts of Kindness Fund. Whereas kindness is fundamental, kindness is fundamental to human experience and essential to the success of human relationships. And whereas kindness transcends those boundaries, place among ourselves, is one of our most important mutuals and collective one another. Enhancing the emotional climate around us and bringing good into the world. The goal of Random Acts of Kindness, first tied with anger and violence in our society by increasing self-esteem and deepening our connection with others through the practice of simple, daily kindness to our fellow. And whereas everyone in the Hartsfield community should be encouraged to practice Random Acts of Kindness in the spirit of compassion. For all persons, now therefore, I, K.C. Hancock, Mayor of the City of Hartsfield. Can you hear me? In the City of Hartsfield, and I urge all citizens to practice acts of kindness, not just this month, but every day of the year, because any day, week, or month is a good time to remind all of us of the need to remember the perspective, the dignity, compassion, humility, or force it to embrace the creation and maintenance of a civilized society.
So good. Absolutely. Bring the banner, maybe manager.
Okay.
If we can find a place to put it. Okay. Oh, we need to get it bigger.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
And for our audience that does not know, Ms. Graham, Ms. Graham is a former councilwoman that served for twenty-four years on this council. Barbara Caraway, she's a volunteer extraordinary. So we thank you for their recognition.
Absolutely, and thank you for noting that, Ms. Mack. Thank you both for all that you have and continue to do for our city. We didn't have anyone sign up to public comment, so, Mr. Manager, that makes it your turn. Do you want to skip item A or comment on it?
Do you want, we can go ahead and do the audit presentation if you like before that.
We should do that.
Sounds good.
Yeah, we should do that. Okay.
I'd be happy to do it myself, but we brought a guy, so.
Yes. You're here, we might as well let you do what you came to do for the last year audit report, Mr. Shane Kirkley from Shaheen Hancock and Godwin Abson relation for the record.
This is actually a mark.
Actually not Shane Kirkley, you get Mark. We're tonight, so.
All right.
You get a designated here, as they say. We're going to go through the executive audit summary, everybody should have a copy of that in front of you. So we'll go through that tonight. Before I get started, to let you know, the city received an unmodified opinion on your financial statements. That's the highest opinion we can give on a set of audited financial statements. So basically, it just means that you got a clean opinion. So congratulations to the city for that.
Thank you.
The outline of the audit report, this kind of just breaks down that nice audit report that you got in front of you, that if you want to have some good nightly reading to help you fall asleep at night, just kind of tells you where different sections are. So the first three pages, of course, that is our opinion letter, and basically, all that's saying is that we have audited the financial statements and that they are materially stated. We didn't find any material misstatements, so that's the basis for our opinion. You've got management discussion and analysis. This gets into the city as a whole, so it's all your governmental activities and your water sewer and the the water park fund out there. And it basically identifies, talks about all your assets, talks about all your liabilities, talks about the debt structure of the city. How did the city do this year, what contributed to whether income was up, expenses were up. So there's some good detailed information in those pages. Your basic financial statements start with page twelve and go through twenty-three. The first two pages are your Gatsby thirty-four, and those are a look at the city as a whole. So it's capturing all your fixed assets, whether it's buildings, roads, whatever. And it's capturing all your debt, like all your bonds, your OPEB liability, and your nice pension liability that requires you to record. And then it gets into your fund statements behind that. The notes to the financial statements, those are details about different accounting policies, and there's also details that support the financial numbers that are in the pages in the basic financial statements. Supplemental information, these are either general fund, it could be budget actual financial statements. It breaks down your different special revenue funds, debt service funds, and then it gets into your proprietary funds. And there's a compliance section, and what that is, is that's a letter on internal control. And that's one of the things we're required to report on. And basically, what that letter is going to tell you is, we did not find any internal control weaknesses during the audit. So there are no findings for six thirty twenty-three, okay? There are different type of funds that you have. Of course, you've got governmental, and that's broken down between general fund. You've got eight different special revenue funds, and the detailed description of those are on page seventy-eight of your audit report. You have two debt service funds, and then you've got proprietary funds, which you've got water sewer and the water park, stormwater and recreation concession. Again, the detail, if you want to see what the description of those funds, that's on page ninety-nine. And then you've got a fiduciary fund, which is the parking and beautification fund. All right, let's get into some numbers here. So your governmental funds, and what this layout is, this is basically a snapshot of what the audit report shows. So the reason it's showing the general fund, the hospitality fund, and the infrastructure fund, those are what we consider major funds, so those have to be shown separate. So the other governmental funds, what that means is, that's your other six special revenue funds plus your two debt service funds. Those are going to be, that's a combined number. So total assets for the general fund were seven point eight million. Total liabilities and deferred inflows were a little over three, so your fund balance at the end of six thirty twenty-three was about four and a half million. Hospitality, all they have are assets and deferred outflows of eight hundred thousand. Infrastructure, again, only has total assets and deferred outflows of almost three hundred thousand. And your other governmental funds, like I said, these are your other six special revenue funds and your debt service funds combined. Total assets were three point four, liabilities are about one point three, and so that leaves you a fund balance a little over two million dollars. Proprietary funds, we've combined all these together. And so the total assets and deferred outflows for all proprietary funds is about five point eight million. Total liabilities and deferred inflows are almost seventeen million, so your equity or your net position is eighteen point eight million dollars. So let's look at the breakdown of what makes up either fund balance on your net position, okay?
Can you give us a page to look at, please, sir?
I'm sorry?
A page number.
If you want to look at the actual page of the audit report, this information is going to be on page thirteen for the general fund and the governmental, and you're probably looking at page, I don't have an audit report in front of me, but probably page eighteen, if you want to look at, for proprietary funds.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So under the general fund, you've got a hundred thousand dollars committed, which means you've got about four point four unassigned fund balance. And basically, what that equates to is about a four-month reserve in fund balance. The rule of thumb in governmental accounting is you want to have somewhere between three to six months. So your fund balance is very healthy. Hospitality tax is, it's all restricted. Same thing with infrastructure fund, that fund balance of two hundred ninety-five thousand is restricted. Other governmental funds, most of it is restricted, and then you've got some assigned of seven hundred ninety thousand, okay? For the proprietary funds, most of your equity or net position is tied up in your fixed assets, as you can see, about fifteen point seven. You've got restricted for debt service of a little over a million dollars, and your unrestricted or your unassigned fund net position is a little over two million. So that roughly equates to about three months in your proprietary funds, okay? If you flip the page, we'll look at revenues and expenses. The revenues, this is going to be bound on page sixteen of the audit report for the governmental funds, and on page nineteen for the proprietary funds, if you want to. Total revenues for the general fund was eleven point, almost eleven point eight million. You had thirteen, a little over thirteen million in operating expenditures and other financing sources, which a lot of times is either transfers, it can be debt proceeds. That was a little over two, so your positive change in fund balance for six thirty twenty-three was almost seven hundred thousand dollars, okay? Hospitality tax fund, you had revenues of one point two, expenditures of two hundred and twenty, and other financing uses of about nine hundred thousand. So your positive change for hospitality was seventy-one thousand. Infrastructure fund had total revenues of a little over seven hundred thousand. You had almost five hundred thousand in operating, a hundred and fifty thousand in other financing uses. So your positive change was almost eighty thousand dollars. And then to combine all the other funds, total revenue was three point two. Expenses were one point nine, and other financing uses was eight hundred thousand, which left a positive change in fund balance of five hundred and thirty thousand dollars. For the proprietary funds, your operating revenues were six point seven. Operating expenses were six point four. Your non-operating expenses, this includes your interest expense and your interest income, so this would be interest earned on your bank accounts, and then it would be interest expense on the bond payments. That was five hundred thousand, then you had transfers in of seven hundred and fifty. So your positive change for the water sewer and the water park fund was five hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. The other proprietary funds, seventy-six thousand, a hundred and sixty-nine thousand in expenses, transfers of ninety-eight, so you had a positive change of a little over five thousand dollars. Like I said, that's all I've got tonight. Just wanted to reiterate that, once again, the audit report was a clean opinion and no findings. And that's a testament to y'all's finance staff here, and they do a good job. We come in and we kind of put them through the wringer for about two weeks and asked a bunch of questions and demand a lot of information, and Karen and her staff, they do an excellent job. So just wanted the city and council to know that, and with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that anybody might have.
Anybody? See anything in there you wanted to, all right?
I'm always the open door. I'm by any time.
What, all right, what was the term you started off with, unmodified what?
It's an unmodified opinion.
An modified opinion, all right.
That means good.
That means good.
I wasn't saying that's.
You don't want anything that says modified or adverse.
Well, it seems like the least enthusiastic way I've ever heard to say, great job. Yeah. The special breed you are, but we do appreciate all your hard work, and you're correct, thank you so much to Karen and, you know, Daniel as well for all the hard work you do year-round. I know that you say this is the budget season, but budget season never stops, is what I've learned, so we very much appreciate you taking care of the, taking care of the city. Thank you, thank you again, too.
Thank you, sir.
Now, I think it's your turn.
Sure. And I just wanted to kind of say, so some of the numbers we talked about, I wanted to highlight just one more thing about the audit. So in twenty twenty-one, oh, December of twenty twenty, we passed the fund reserve balance policy, when we were striving to reach a fund balance of fifteen to seventeen percent with a max of thirty percent that we want to have. We gave ourselves three years to do that. Now, last year, we actually hit the twenty-nine percent mark, and this year, if you look at the paperwork, we're at thirty-three point five six as of June of, so we are exceeding that limit. As I was talking to Karen about what our options would be, we want to start looking at that a little more closely, as again, because we didn't expect to be in that position so quickly. And so we're going to be looking at what that means for average out to be closer to those numbers, to be in a better position, start looking at what excess money can be spent. We don't want to be rolling that deep in money, but what it shows is that the city is growing through our, of course, our revenue is growing, but also our expenses is being it is testament to all the staff doing all that together, so.
It's a fantastic problem.
It is a fantastic, it's a problem that we didn't expect to be in so quickly, but it's a good problem. In nineteen, we were in a far different conversation compared to what we are now, so I'm trying to coin the terms of the Moore Effect. No. It's a working. It's a working title.
In nineteen, if you look at that same line, where you'll see we have four months.
Yeah.
In two thousand and nineteen, that same line was half a month that we had. There has been a lot of work done at the city to get it to this point. As you did know, Gatsby is three to six months. When we wrote that policy originally, we were hoping to get to three months because we had half a month in the bank strike. So it is an exciting time that we get to have some discussions on quarterly analysis, we could do, are we doing everything in benefit-wise, and some good conversations.
Awesome.
Just overall, we're very excited and pleased about it.
Me too.
Karen, what line item is our Accommodation Tax Fund under?
It would be under your other governmental funds, as you said, that don't roll up there because it's not quite as big, and hospitality is a big chunk of that. Accommodation isn't here, that's usually about two hundred thousand a year for that, so that's why it rolled into other governmental funds. You're welcome.
Okay. All right, just a couple notes. One, we did have a recognition of employees that we're going to be looking at with our police department. Away from our vice department, so we'll be postponing that. I will take this opportunity, of course, to recognize all of our employees, though, I mean, they do an outstanding job. So good job, everyone. We very appreciate it. All right, and just a reminder, and I had little notes here, strategic planning meeting, we have that for February twenty-first in the addition at nine a.m. We're looking at an all-dayer, so I'm going to need you guys on your best A game for that one. We are going to start with a driving tour. We're finalizing the tour, and Ms. Teresa, thank you for helping us out. PDRTA is actually going to be driving us around, we're very pleased, they were offering us the bus. So we'll do a driving tour of the city for our new council members and old council members to get a look at everything going on, and then we'll jump into some of the fun topics we have for the rest of the day. Another exciting designation, I want to say, is that we are just been, I let you guys know before, but South Carolina Cultural Arts, the Cultural Arts designation, it was just made official today. So we are the tenth Cultural Arts District in South Carolina. It was a unanimous decision, they were very excited to do it. I'll be sending you guys the article about it, but we'll be doing press release about it later on. So that is final, that has a long time coming. Johnny Andrews worked on that, and of course, Matt Winburn, our mainstream manager, brought it home for us. And lastly, again, a reminder, statement of economic interest deadline is March thirtieth, twenty twenty-four at noon. They will find you if you don't submit it, so please submit, if you have any problems, contact Ms. Andrea over there, she'll help you out. All right, and that is all I have, Mr. Manager.
I read the article on breaking news today about the Hartsfield or the Hartsfield, Artsfield getting the cultural award. That's very, very big, and I hope we can do some more in some other parts of town.
Exactly. This is just the start for us.
Right.
If you want, we have another presentation. There's a file I from Duke is here to talk to us about something.
Yes, of course.
A big plastic thing, I hope it comes with dollar signs attached to it. Hello.
Thank you, guys, for having me.
I'm Lauren Baker, I'm the Government and Community Relations Manager for Arlington County for Duke Energy. I'm excited to be here today because anytime I get to bring my big check somewhere, it's always a good day, but especially when I bring it to my hometown. This month is Black History Month, so this is very fitting that you presented the proclamation, because the Duke Energy Foundation has also, will be announcing later on this week five thousand dollars across the state to organizations that help advance African-American history and just different, different things to help promote things like that across the state. And we were able to work with the city to secure five thousand dollars here to Hartsfield, other than Pride Park.
All right, thank you.
A nice surprise for you, right, Ms. Lauren? But we, we're just really excited, recreation is so important, and the value that that brings to a community and having accessible and walkable recreation is also very important. And Hartsfield's fortunate to have so many great parks across the entire city, but we're excited that this five thousand dollars will be added in advancement at Pride Park in the future, and Duke Energy should be proud to play a small part in that. But we're excited that this five thousand dollars will be added, um, in advancement at Pride Park in the future, and we should be excited to play a small part in that.
The park is in Gastsville, the last district, so. Look pretty, Pete.
Can't take this one to the bank, that's real money.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Lauren.
And Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and add this, that money will be added to additional fifteen thousand. Last year, and we'll be adding that money towards, uh, some new playground enhancements as well.
From the trees to. Yeah, that's a good point, that's the second gift we've got from Duke Energy to improve our parks, so. Thanks times two, or a million even. That all for you, Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
All right, well, uh, thank you once again to our staff for preparing your, uh, departmental reports and all that stuff, including it in right on to our first order of business, um, we've got one item of unfis, business, this is item number six. The, uh, Mr. Manager, if you would, uh, present, um, the ordinance by title and presentation for the record?
Yes, sir, it's public hearing and final reading of ordinance four, four, six, seven, to provide for the establishment and amendment of fees and rates that are necessary for the operations for the City of Hartsville.
Thank you very much. Um, now for the public hearing. I will, uh, open the public hearing, if you'd like to speak on this, uh, item of business, please step forward, state your name and address for the record, and keep your comments to two minutes or less. Public hearing is now open. Anyone like to comment on ordinance forty-four, sixty-seven? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Public hearing is now closed. Um, I would entertain a motion to approve the final reading and waiving of the complete reading of ordinance forty-four, sixty-seven.
Mr. Mayor, I submerge that we approve ordinance forty-four, sixty-seven.
Thank you, Mayor Proten.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, is there any discussion of this ordinance? Crickets, all right. All those in favor of approving, uh, the final reading of ordinance forty-four, sixty-seven, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. That brings us on to new business, resolution two, twenty-four, oh, one, Mr. Manager, if you would.
Yes, sir, it's approval to apply for the FEMA assistance to firefighters A F G grant.
Fantastic, I love a grant. Um.
Okay, um, can you expand on that, any?
Yes, sir, so every, so we are looking to, um, and this is a chief, as, uh, we've been looking at this past couple of years. Essentially, we're looking at some, uh, grant monies for the purchase of self-contained breathing apparatuses, uh, the S B, S C B A for firefighters. Uh, they are extremely expensive, uh, we have been going after this grant a number of times, it's extremely uh, but we are going to be looking at what we need to do to replace some of these end-of-life, um, breathing apparatuses for our firefighters.
Thank you.
Good.
All right, I hear a motion before we ask any more questions, um, would I, I would entertain a motion to approve resolution zero, two, twenty-four, zero, one.
It is so moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion on this, any questions about that?
Have we gotten assistance for this particular item before?
Believe we have, yes, ma'am.
We have?
Chief Ber, when was the last time we had that? Twenty twelve. We've applied the last three years I've been here, so.
So is this, uh, revolving grant, or this is, it's a close, what's the deadline for?
Believe it's every year, uh, the deadline, March is coming up, yes, sir.
March, okay. It's good.
Can't get it if you don't apply. Any other questions on that before we vote, all right? All those in favor of approving resolution zero, two, twenty-four, zero, one, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
He opposed, the ayes have it, resolution is approved. Moving right along to resolution oh, two, twenty-four, oh, two, Mr. Manager, if you would.
All right, this is approval for collaborative agreement between the City of Hartsville and the House of Hope of the P D for emergency shelters.
Quick, um, definition?
Yes, sir, so basically, you guys had obligated a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from our American Rescue Plan Act monies for the services the House arise sometime in the, uh, in the city. This is similar to what we've done with, uh, other entities, providing a service with the city, so we're not giving money with, interacting with them in an agreement. And so we need to get this obligate, or this contract signed so that we can move forward with the designation of the money.
And for those of you, uh, who were here, executive director, president, Brian Braddock, from the House of Hope spoke last month, um, he is in the middle of negotiations on a piece of property, so it is definitely moving forward, I'm really excited to see where, uh, where this ends up, um, hopefully this year will be a really good year for, for Hartsville and for our brand-new emergency shelter. But, um, I would, I should have gotten a motion first, I'm sorry, uh, I would entertain a motion uh, to approve resolution zero, two, twenty-four, zero, two.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, any other, uh, any questions about that or discussion before we vote? All right, all those in favor of approving resolution zero, two, twenty-four, zero, two, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, resolution is approved. Now, going to executive session, I would entertain a motion to enter executive session pursuant to S C code FOIA section thirty-four, seventy, A, one, for discussion of appointments to various city boards, committees, and commissions, and for discussion of matters related to city judge.
It's so moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion on that? All those in favor of entering executive session, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, we now stand in executive session. Staff and members of the public, thank you so much for being here tonight, we appreciate you being engaged in the process.